Well, call our meeting to order. First item is invocation by Reverend Wendy Swanson of the Prescott Valley United Methodist Church. They'll be followed by the pledge of allegiance by Chief Petty Officer Chris Mitchell.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious and loving God, we come before you this evening after a long day. There is much still to be done. Lord, we ask for blessings on this town council, for the decisions that they need to make. We ask for blessings on a retirement Detective Danny Onan, who we have called to service and now you have called him to a new station of retirement and enjoyment of life. Lord, we ask for blessings on the students that are here this evening, that represent the future of this community and of our world. We ask for special blessings on them. Gracious God, we lift up those who have fallen, those that you called home early in 9/11, and we ask that the essays that will be presented tonight will bring honor to them and glory to you. Holy God in heaven, we ask for your blessings on all of these and more. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Swanson. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Chief Petty Officer Mitchell. Okay, next item is scheduled announcement, Chamber of Commerce. Marnie or Patrick? Oh, I'm sorry, we gotta do roll call first.
That would be...
Give me about one second. Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Present.
Vice Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
Still here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Here.
Councilmember Nye?
Glad to be here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
We have a call on Mayor.
Thank you Diane. Okay, now the scheduled announcement. Chamber of Commerce, Patrick, thank you.
Good afternoon, or good evening now. It's great, I gotta practice my walk again, that was wonderful. Hope you guys are all doing well tonight, thank you again, it's great to see you twice in one week. This time I don't have any businesses for you, because we typically do that at the first meeting, just a few updates on the events coming up. We've got the Flying High Turkey Drive coming up on the 21st. That'll be at the Fry's Stores here in Prescott Valley, as well as Prescott on Fair Street and Willow Creek. We'll be there from 12 to 6, collecting turkeys, the whole nine yards, all the fixing, anything that you can think of that you'd wanna donate, as well as cash or check donations as well if you would rather donate that way. We've got a pretty competitive goal this year, 2,500 turkeys, trying to fill the Yavapai Food Bank, so please come on out and support your local food banks. And I have a few flyers up here for you guys as well, and I'll leave some on the table on the way out in case anybody else would like some information on the turkey drive. And then next we have the 17th Annual Valley of Lights opening up this Thanksgiving evening and going through December 30th. Please feel free to come out and enjoy the wonderful light display, and we are accepting donations there as well to continue keeping that up for our county and for our town. I also have some wonderful brochures that we just got in, I'll pass those out to you when I'm finished, they look wonderful this year. Please come on out and support your community. Typically, on any given night, we get anywhere from 200 to 300, up to 1,000 cars, so it's a great night, especially during the holidays, you can bring your family, anyone that's visiting you, and kinda show them what Prescott Valley's all about. Thank you.
Thank you Patrick. Okay, next item. PB PD Danny Owen Retirement. Chief? And I understand Danny's got his father here and brother and some other family?
I'm sure he's got quite a bit of support.
He's hiding in the corner, there he is. Come on up.
Thank you Mayor. Well, tonight we're here to honor Danny Owen on his retirement after 22 years of dedicated service to the citizens of both the Yavapai County and the town of Prescott Valley. Danny began his law enforcement career with the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office in 1994 as a detention officer. A year later, in 1995, he was appointed as a certified deputy and attended the Law Enforcement Training Academy in Tucson, Arizona. After graduating from the academy, Danny was assigned to the mayor patrol district, which is actually where he grew up. On September 25th, 2000, after spending six years with the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office, Danny came to work for the Prescott Valley Police Department. He's worked at many different assignments during his time with us, to include patrol, traffic, and detectives. In the Investigations Division is where Danny has excelled. He has served in this capacity for 11 years. He is currently the senior detective and is the lead investigator for our Financial Crimes Unit. During his career, Danny has received several accommodations for his performance, to include Police Officer of the Year, Community Service Officer of the Year. He was awarded the Police Star, which is awarded for heroism and bravery in the line of duty. He was recognized for organizing and implementing the first ever Every 15 Minutes program in the state of Arizona. Now, this is a program presented to school-aged children that exposes them to the real-life consequences of drunk driving. The program's name comes from the fact that a person dies every 15 minutes in an alcohol-related accident. Danny also was able to obtain thousands of dollars in traffic-related grant money over the years. Danny holds an ASPOST General Instructor Certification and has several investigative-related certifications in fraud and financial crimes. His hobbies consist of fishing and traveling. He is married to his wife and best friend Candace, and together they have three children, Adam, Hannah, and Sarah. Danny's expertise will be greatly missed, almost as much as the affable personality and honorable character that has made him a wonderful colleague and friend. I don't always say it, but when someone enters retirement, there's always a little bit of trepidation, some uncertainty, but Danny, I can tell you that you can be certain of the fact that you have made a positive difference in the lives of many people. Although my computer is a little safer now, I will miss his presence in the department. Please join me in congratulating Danny Owen on his well-deserved retirement. What about my computer, you wonder? Oh, here, let me tell ya. So, three years ago, when I came here, I discovered that Danny has a nice sense of humor, he's a real kidder. So, I think it was like my third day here on the job, and I was down in Phoenix getting a physical, so I could get my certification. And I get an email on my smartphone from my evidence supervisor at the time, and he says, "Okay, I will not make any more purchases or do anything else until I get your full approval." And I thought, "What is he talking about?" So I scrolled down through the email stream, and apparently, it was fairly obvious, I had sent an email to the supervisor saying, "You are not to make any more purchases until they are strictly approved by me personally." Well, come to find out, it's a bad idea to leave your door open when you're out of the building, because certain jokesters like to take advantage of the fact that your computer is left unattended. So Danny had decided to play a little bit of a joke on our evidence supervisor, and it was all in good fun, and it's been great fun, and I've been able to talk about it now for three years, and it still gets good traction. Thanks Danny.
Have you ever used a microphone Danny?
Yeah.
I asked the secretary, I said, "Do you think the chief would mind this?" "No." Well, little did I know, she was leaving.
Oh, I was stuck by myself to fend for this and just admit it, and chief took it great.
You gotta stand closer to the microphone Danny.
She's not here. All right Danny, we have a few things we'd like to present to you. First thing...
First of all, Chief, are you sure you wanna let him retire?
I'd rather he didn't, but it's out of my hands. First thing is our shadow box, commemorating your entire career and accomplishments in law enforcement, to include the county. And this was put together by Kristy Teeman, who is my executive assistant, she put this together for Danny. Next thing would be a plaque, and it says, "An appreciation presented to Detective Danny Owen for all your years of service and dedication to the Prescott Valley Police Department and the town of Prescott Valley, 2000 to 2016." And this will be your retirement badge, I'll take it out of the hermetically sealed envelope, never touched by human hands, except to put it in here. Almost got it. So, and this one actually contains the retirement badge, so congratulations on that as well.
Chief Edelson, you have any comments too?
So, I've known Danny for a long time, we had the pleasure to work together for, I think, all of your tenure at the Prescott Valley Police Department. Chief mentioned Dan's character, and I know it to be a great character. You know, obviously, the humor is a big part of it, and that's kept me smiling and laughing on many occasions, leaving work with stitches in my side. But I also know him to be a very kind and generous person. Every year Danny would put on at least one or two different events, and bring all of the police officers and their families out, and give us all paintball guns for free. And so we would go out in the sticks, and I have bruises to prove it, still to today, and he would get us all together, but it was a great event, we did it for many years, I didn't get to attend every year, but I really wanna thank you for that, because it meant a lot to me, and I know it meant a lot to our agency, so thank you.
Danny, wanna introduce two special people here tonight? Oh yes, her and I guess more than two, there's your parents, father?
Yep, and my brother and dad are here, and my mother-in-law is here as well, in the front with cameras. And my wife Candace, my daughter Sarah, my daughter Hannah, and my son Adam. My dad David and brother Donnie with the sheriff's office, and his daughter J.C. and my mother-in-law. So, that's my family with us tonight.
Chief, any more comments?
Oh, I just, I do, you know, wanna thank God for protecting me these 22 years and taking me home every night, giving me the good health to finish strong, my family for putting up with me for 22 years in this career, and all my friends in law enforcement that are family. It's been a great time. And to the town, thank you for 16 great years. It's, I'll miss it, but I'm not going far.
Good.
So, thank you.
Well, thank you. Counsel, have any comments?
Of course we do.
Marty? Oh, so would you Marty?
Sure.
Congratulations.
I've gotten to interact with Danny over the years for, through several different organizations I belong to, plus when I served, I'm still a board member, and I'm a past president of the Prescott Valley Police Foundation, so we had a lot of interaction through different organizations. I've heard Danny speak many times on different issues regarding computer fraud and identity theft. He's come to some of the organizations I belong to, and as everybody has already said, I mean, he's a great speaker, he's very personable, and he approaches everything with a great perspective, you know, so, and he's just, you know, from what I've seen, from what I hear, and through everything that we've been through, he's just a great police officer, he will be missed, but I wanna tell you, retirement is an awesome thing.
Well Danny, as I said to you and your family down there, for some of us, it's a sad night, but I'm excited for you and your family, but I am sad for us and the entire community, because you're not just dedicated, you're a dedicated spark plug. And I even thought about bringing you a spark plug tonight. And you know, life was never, ever the same after you left the county and joined us here. Now, I didn't say whose life was not the same. I'll leave that for you to figure out. I know you're going to take your zest for life, and you still have things you wish to accomplish. I can't imagine you ever without goals and desires to give back to your community, so I'm gonna be watching Danny.
Vice Mayor?
Danny, congratulations. You will be missed by the town, by all of us, and by the citizens of Prescott Valley, for all that you've done for us and given to us, and to your family as well, for all they've given over the years. We certainly do appreciate it, and from someone who's tried to retire three times, I hope you have better luck at it than I have, but please enjoy your time.
Mary?
Well Danny, I just wanna say thank you, appreciate everything you've given to the community. I wish you and your family the best, God bless you guys as you move on to a different area of your life, and I know we'll see you around in the town. Thank you.
Mike?
Yes, congratulations on your retirement. I retired once as well, and it's something I think the council's very happy to see, that you're able to retire, and we know, we feel, I think warmly, that you'll be here still in the community, and we'll see you in different aspects of your new life. And the only thing I kinda wonder sometimes, we've had a few retirements, and they've been longer than 16 years, you know, they've been here for 20 or 22, so it may be a little premature, but we understand your rationale. But obviously, you're a multi-talented officer, all of our officers are, I'm always taken back in terms of the education and the experience and what you bring to the job, so we appreciate that very much. Congratulations.
Good job Danny, and you've been great, we were very proud of you and very appreciated your service. So just keep up the good work, whatever you do, come and see us once in a while.
And any other comments?
You'll have to use the microphone.
Yeah, it's honored to serve with the men and women of Yavapai County in law enforcement, and to serve the citizens of Yavapai County, it was my honor and privilege, so thank you. I'm not really going far, I'm just going over to the registrar contractor's office as an investigator here in Prescott, so I'll still be around, and you'll see me doing different things, so, but, so thank you all again, and to the town, thank you for great 16 years.
Chief, any final comments? Kay, yes, you may. Kay is the president of our police foundation.
Actually, I'm here tonight in several capacities. As a private citizen, also, I've been in block watch for, captain for over 14 years, I was a volunteer with the Trauma Intervention Program for five years, and I've been with the Police Foundation for nine. The only reason that matters, and the only reason I say it tonight, is because throughout all those years and all those capacities, I've had contact with Danny and worked in conjunction with him in many areas. And whether it is him teaching a seminar to block watch people on identity theft and fraud, which he is so knowledgeable about, and yet very capable of presenting it in a manner that we understand. Or whether it's him investigating a situation in my neighborhood, or the many calls that we have had together, when I was with the Trauma Intervention Program, coming to help victims and families at crime scenes, and he was the lead investigator, we had to work together. And in everything, I fully appreciate and respect his high level of professionalism, his compassion and caring and kindness toward victims and family, and his calm demeanor regardless of what was going on. And the help also that he gave to the trauma intervention people when we needed information or we needed to change situations or something, even though he was busy investigating, he was quick to accommodate our needs as well. And I have one call in particular that I want to mention. I had been on this crime scene for three or four hours, helping several family members, and the police had multiple issues that they were investigating at this one scene. And at one point, one of the people had moved off to the side in a totally different area than where I was, and all of a sudden, that person went berserk, and was just very, very upset and crazy. And Danny came over to me, and he said, "Kay, we don't think it'll be safe for you to be here any longer, you need to go home." And I said, "Well, I need a few more minutes to finish up helping these people." So Danny and three police officers stayed right by my side until I was done. When I finished, they surrounded me and walked me to my car to make sure I was safe. In our training, we were taught that we won't be sent to dangerous situations, but any situation can go bad at any time, and that night, but, they said that the police would be watching out for you. And I was encouraged to see that they really did watch out for us, and Danny Owen had my back that night and kept me safe. And I'll never forget, and I thank you, and I thank you for all your service to our community, and I wish you and your family the very best in all the future ahead.
Thank you Kay. Okay, next is Student of the Month. Mako Bennett, do I pronounce that right? Mike, you're up. Court, good to see you.
Well, as you can tell, this is a very special evening, and we're gonna make it even more special. Every fourth Thursday, and obviously because of the holidays, we're meeting a little early to recognize our Student of the Month. And every month, we, in collaboration with the town of Prescott Valley, Bradshaw Mountain High School, and the Prescott Valley Rotary Club, we look and scour the Bradshaw Mountain High School for those students who excel in everyday life, as well as academics, sports, and things that really contribute to our community. And we've identified one of those individuals tonight, Mako Bennett. And we believe that these students exemplify not only the values that the town of Prescott Valley and the Police Department, obviously, and our community tries to show as far as our great ability to respond to different issues in the community. And one is that youth, as they go to school, encounter a lot of different things in their life that challenge them, and these students, a lot of them beat the barriers and excel in areas that when I was going to high school, I would've never dreamt of. It's just unbelievable, some of the things that these students do. And so I'm going to help you understand what's so special about Mako, and that is that he's got quite a background. I call him a very accomplished student, and you'll understand why when I go through some of the things that he's accomplished since his freshman year at Bradshaw Mountain. He's a student that's demonstrated interest and talent, not only in academics, as most students, like I would've when I went to high school, if I could achieve some level of excellence, but he's gotten farther than that. He excels in athletics and music as well. In each of his four years at Bradshaw Mountain High School, we've learned that he's challenged himself in those same areas. He's not satisfied with just accomplishing something the freshman or sophomore or junior year, he keeps on challenging himself to go farther and really raise the bar, I think, for other students in Bradshaw Mountain High School. As an example, he has taken advanced placement courses, and we've talked about this with other students we recognize, but this again goes above and beyond, in Spanish, geometry, anatomy, zoology, algebra, world history, US history, pre-calculus, chemistry, economics, and marketing. And these are classes that are college-level, more or less, and so he's looking at things that he can accomplish, that he has a capability of doing, so he really is making a market at Bradshaw Mountain. Mako apparently is also an avid swimmer at school, which has earned him the honor as the most valuable swimmer, I think each of the four years he's been on the swim team. He's the captain of the swim team during his tenure. He's also made his mark and excelled in the concert band, here's his music, I think his love for music, chamber choir, jazz band, and the mountain chamber choir. So he's a multi-diverse, a multi-talented student. I'm not sure where he finds the time to do all this, and as we joke about being retired and getting busier, he's just getting started, and you know, I kinda wipe my brow and say, "Wow, where does he find the time?" Outside of school, Mako's also been very busy. He's in his church, he's participated not only in service trips to Baja, Mexico, twice, he's walked 40 miles in a Mormon pioneer reenactment, just to get a sense of the history behind that walk. He's a member of the Prescott Valley State Youth Council, he became a Boy Scout and participated in the Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Seminar. And I know Hugh O'Brien from another civic organization, where a lot of students around the state are picked because of their excellence in high school, and they all meet together, and I'm not sure if this was a day issue or somewhere else, but somewhere in Arizona, and they get together and kinda work out what they would like to do in the future relative to their lives and the future of Arizona and our country. So I'm gonna leave it at that, and I'm gonna turn it over to Court Minor, the principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School, and he's gonna give you a little perspective in terms of his academic accomplishments as well, so, Court?
Thank you Mr. Whiting, Mayor Scoog, council members, distinguished guests, my name is Court Minor, I'm the proud principal of Bradshaw Mountain High School. Mako's pretty darn special. I know Mike has done a decent job of hitting some of the things, but I wanna just talk about quickly his involvement at Bradshaw Mountain High School. From being in a Boy Scout, attending seminary every morning before school, being a member of Boys State, member of chamber choir, or swim, went to state this last year, broke all kinds of school records. He's taken every AP class on our campus except AP Psych and AP Studio Art. Incredible church involvement, as you just heard Michael discuss there. NHS, his involvement with the National Honor Society. Band, not just marching band, concert band, but also jazz, and the Hugh O'Brien or the Hobie Award. Now, what makes him a little bit different to me, in terms of my 24 years in education, is not only does Mako make the programs that he's involved with better, but he makes the people around him better, and that's really special, and everything that he's involved with, he makes the program better, and makes every student, every kid around him better. It's absolutely very impressive. He does wanna swim in college, and major in engineering. His GPA, with all that involvement from church, the community, school, club organizations, athletics, his GPA's a 4.564. He is ranked number two in the entire senior class, and before I turn the mic over to Mako, I think someone more special than I, Ms. Bennett, his mother, I'm gonna ask her to come up and say a few words.
Welcome, good to see you.
Mayor, council member, and guests, when our family moved here, we're in our fourth year in Prescott Valley, and I want to thank this community for embracing our family. Could not ask for a better place to have our family thrive, and so we're blessed to be here. Pastor Wendy is not here, but she adopted our school at Bradshaw, so when I heard her say the prayer, and seeing a lot of the officers who support our students and our families and all that you do, and just grateful to be in a community and to have my son, my children attend schools humbly... attend schools, Humboldt Unified is phenomenal. And my son has not accomplished this on his own. He's been blessed with many teachers who guide and direct him, both with academics but also moral decisions and how to be a solid young man, and just grateful for the staff and the program that Mr. Miner runs. So I want to thank that, and Mako is, I know, I don't always see all the things that he does because he just goes through them, but I can now see why he eats a lot and is tired all of the time, why he does require those Sunday naps. But he continues to serve, and it's one of those that as a parent, we knew that we were just gifted to be his parents, that we are his stewards, that we're really not his parents because we learn and grow more from him, and just grateful that he's been given so many opportunities because it's phenomenal to see all the youth and the youth that he's surrounded with. He's one of many phenomenal students at Bradshaw that challenge and encourage him and that he competes with to keep going. So thank you for all that this town and this school provides. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Skug. And I just wanna, and the council members, I just wanna thank the town of Prescott Valley as well as the Rotary Club for recognizing me and my accomplishments. I want to also thank my family, my parents, for all that they've done for me. I don't think I would be alive if I didn't have food on the table every night or a bed to sleep on at night, as well as money for all sorts of activities that I need to go do. And I'm just grateful for all that I have. I'm so grateful for my parents and teachers, especially, every single one of my teachers has really helped me and taught me so many things, and I have a very good relationship with my swim coach, and I'm so grateful that she was able to be my swim coach when we moved here. She really was an answer to my prayers, and I don't think I would have been able to accomplish a lot of the things that I've done without her. And I'm so thankful for all that I have and thankful for all of the support that I've had throughout the years, and thank you.
So obviously, I think you'd agree that he exemplifies what we look for in our community, and we're really honored, I think, to recognize Mako as Student of the Month for November. And we have a few things we'd like to give you to remember this day or this night. One is a certificate, and it just indicates that you've been designated as the Student of the Month as part of the Rotary Club, town of Prescott Valley and Bradshaw Mountain High School. So hopefully you'll put that in a prominent place. We know you'll be proud to show that. And we do also have a paperweight, Student of the Month, Prescott Valley, Arizona, with the Rotary logo. So we hope, in your endeavors, that you'll use this to keep your paperwork organized. And then we do expect you to come back sometime to Prescott Valley and help us grow this community, because we'll look forward to your leadership. So congratulations once again.
Keep up the good work. That's great. Appreciate that. Okay, next item is Healing Field Essay Presentations. Darlene Packard and Sandy Schaefer will be presenting. We'll meet you down there, too.
It's very, very wonderful to see so many people here tonight. Tonight, we have an amazing presentation, and we're gonna have Darlene and Sandy continue on for just an amazing event that always seems to generate through the Healing Field and more to come. Thank you, Darlene, Sandy.
Good evening. For those of you who aren't really aware of the Healing Field, I don't know how you couldn't be, but if you're not, I challenge you next year, the week of 9/11, to come right here to this location and see our Healing Field of 3,000 flags. It's an amazing event, and there are only 11 in the entire United States. So we need to be very proud as citizens of this community that we have this here as a teaching tool. Tonight, we are here to honor seven students who wrote essays. For the first time, we had an essay contest on what the American flag means to me. We have tried for five years to get students and educators involved in our Healing Field because we believe that it's such a tool to make our students understand the things that have been given for our nation and the flag and what it represents. So we're so excited that we have Jessica Marks, eighth grade teacher from Glassford Hills Middle School, who had her students write these essays. She picked the top seven students, and we want to honor them now. I'm going to read just a little excerpt of what these students wrote in their essays. They were amazing. Our first student wrote, "The white on the American flag shows how pure the deeds of the American soldiers are, that they did the right thing because there is no other option." That was written by Haley Denman. Please welcome Haley. And just so you know, each student is being given one of our American flags. The flag symbolizes bravery, freedom, pride, honor, and hope. That was written by Madison Homan. "To me, that flag is a symbol of pure determination and persistence that seem to scream, 'You can do it! Go, go, go! Don't give up.'" That's what the flag means to me. Kalen Mitchell. "All of the flags, our parts, are very important. They help create the overall view of our country, how others think of us, and much, much more. Without the stripes, we would have no symbolism of the fighting we would put up or the hope we have for the present and future of our country." Callie Smith. "The flag of the United States of America inspires us to be better people and represents all the effort our founding fathers had to put into our country to make it a better place for its people." Danielle Tran. "The United States of America proudly wields our flag as a symbol of everything it has to offer. Everything we earned is symbolized by the flag. US citizens look at the flag and they think how every person is treated equally." Johnny Valley. And our last student wasn't able to attend, but he said, "I am thankful for the rights I have in America. That's what the American flag means to me." Christopher Viera. Please give another, please give another big round of applause for these students. I'd like to just say, with all the negative that we've seen lately with people that are protesting and burning the American flag, these children are the hope that we can all have in the future of our nation. And I also would like to now take a moment and recognize the educators that really supported our Healing Field this year. I'd like Ms. Suzie Dandos to come forward. Ms. Dandos is now a teacher at Kirkland Elementary School, as well as her principal. Please, we don't want to leave her out. But Mrs. Dandos brought her school, last year she was principal at the Prescott Christian Academy. She brought a busload of students to our field a year ago, and this year with the Kirkland Schools, how many students did you bring? Eighty? Eighty-five students came all the way from Kirkland to see our field. So we really want to thank you and thank your principal. What is your name?
Michelle Perry.
Michelle Perry is the principal at Kirkland School, so please give them a round of applause. We really appreciate it. And our other teacher, obviously, who did so much to support this essay contest is Jessica Marks. Please give Jessica a round of applause. The last teacher who really supported this Healing Field with her students this year couldn't be here tonight, but Deborah Feingston, who is with the Equine High School across the street from here, brought every one of her classes to our field this year, and so please give her a round of applause. We also, we have Tim Carter here from, he's the Yavapai Superintendent. Thank you for attending. And we also have, I apologize, I forgot your name, but representative from Humboldt Unified, Dr. Wagner. Thank you for coming. Would you two please come forward? We'd really like to recognize you. Mr. Carter?
Chief Petty Officer Chris Mitchell.
And could we have, could we have Humboldt Unified, could you come up? And could we have Chief Petty Officer Chris Mitchell come forward, please? We want to tell you a little story here. When we were trying to get the students on board to come to this meeting, we found out that Chief Petty Officer Chris Mitchell was just returning from duty, from active duty, today. So, okay. At this point, I'd like to give each of the students here a gift card. It's a $25 gift card to Walmart, and it was given from an anonymous citizen here who is a huge supporter of the Healing Field and the events that it does.
You know, this event is a community event, and I hope I can get through this clearly. But there are businesses and citizens for the last five years that have brought what we have today to celebrate with each year to the forefront. There are some businesses that every year contribute to continue to make this event be what it is, and I'd like to ask them all to come up at this time. I have Kevin Ray from the Prescott Valley Walmart. I have Dennis Edwards, Cable One in Prescott. Stony Creek Builders, Chris Mooney, and Bob. And I don't know if anyone's here from Coles, I invited them. Is there a representative tonight here at all from Coles in Prescott Valley? Okay, well, these businesses, every year I reach out to them. They give monetary donations, they give in-kind donations, and they come out and help put up the field and get it going. And this is such a full circle of what goes on. And the other, the other part of it all is that we have our first responders here, and I know our stage is getting quite full, but you know what? I'd love to have you guys come up. Because this, and our county supervisor, Jack Smith, is here, and I'd like to have all of you come up. And this is the picture of a community. As we all stand here and look at this, what we have here tonight is a full circle of a community, and we also have one of our veterans, Sean, I'd like for you to come up also, please. If I forget anybody, just come on up, but...
Is that Kirk?
Yes, Kirk. Come on. So once again, you know, there is a community, this is what we are, and we come together and we make this a great place to live. We are safe, and when we need help, these are the people that come to our rescue. We have, what we have is each other, and we build and we grow and we need each other. And we are united, and that's something, what we see here tonight is what we need to see across this country, is a united force of people for the betterment of all. And I can't thank everyone here enough for what we have and all that you give. Thank you.
And on top of it all, I think we should give Mary Mallory a special thanks. For her efforts.
It's a pleasure to be here with you. You know, I had the honor of, when I first moved here, of getting to know Mary Mallory and her husband Kirk. And I lived and worked in Washington DC. Let me take a breath. I'm just excited. And I had seen, from the vantage point where I worked, the explosion at the Pentagon. And I remember that my heart sank, and so did everybody where I was working. It was a psychiatric hospital. And so I went home and, doing what everybody else was wanting to do, which was to get their family together and to call their relatives and make sure everybody was okay, nobody's missing. And then after that, I got involved in the first America's 9/11 motorcycle ride. I was together with a bunch of buddies, and some of them in law enforcement. And what we decided to do was begin this ride and make it, take it to Ground Zero and honor our first responders. And that's what we did. And so that ride goes on, starts from Shanksville, Pennsylvania, down to the Pentagon, and then up to Ground Zero, and there's a tremendous ceremony each year. And so it's really fantastic. And when I first moved here, there wasn't much going on in Yavapai County on 9/11. But I got to know Mary... But I got to know Mary, and Mary presented the idea of the flags. And Mr. Mayor and the city council was receptive. And I remember coming and speaking and sharing about my experience, and how people felt there in Washington DC and that area, and in New York and Pennsylvania, and the magnitude of what they felt and how they felt for their first responders, and how important it is for us to honor and respect those who serve us. And so, my hat's really off to, to Mary, because I knew from the very beginning, there was a lot of work to be done. And, and she's just really done an excellent job. And you've been behind her all the way, I know. Way behind?
I can't thank, I can't thank all of you enough for the essays that you did. Sandy Schaefer, Darlene Packer, fabulous job, absolutely fabulous job, along with our educators, our school directors. I just can't thank you enough. And I pray that, going forward, that next year, it will be only bigger. As this event has started five years ago, it has nothing but grown. And growing is what I'd like to see, as we move forward to a better community for all of us. And education, and education of what had happened is what will help us do better in the future. And my father, who was a POW in World War II, he kept a journal, and he was in the Baton Death March. And in his journal that he kept for three and a half years, when he was liberated, in the journal it says, "It was so good to see the Stars and Stripes." That flag is everything to us. It is who we are.
I want to thank you all, appreciate this. Very special part of our ceremony. Thank you all for your support and your help and your coaching and money, and you young people, keep up the good work. We appreciate that. Great job. Thank you so much. Sean, appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, next item, proclamation, American Diabetes Month. I don't know if anyone, who's, somebody here from the Diabetes Association? Diane, you have the proclamation?
Yes, we do, Mayor. American Diabetes Month, November 2016. Whereas in the United States, nearly 30 million people, including one in nine Arizonans, have diabetes, a serious disease with potentially life-threatening complications, including heart disease, stroke, blindness, kidney disease, and amputation. And whereas an additional 86 million people in the United States are at risk of developing type 2 diabetes, and whereas approximately every 23 seconds, someone in the United States is diagnosed with diabetes, and whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary to put a stop to the diabetes epidemic, now therefore, I Harvey C. Scoog, Mayor of the Town of Prescott Valley, Arizona, do hereby declare November 2016 as American Diabetes Month in the Town of Prescott Valley, and encourage all Americans to recognize American Diabetes Month and be a part of the American Diabetes Association's movement to confront, fight, and most importantly, change the future of this deadly disease.
Thank you, Diane. Mary, any comments?
Well, I do appreciate, as we go forward, trying to make sure that we're able to continue to help people, to understand what they can do to better their health, so that they won't have to deal with this disease. And do we have someone here tonight to accept the proclamation?
Mary, you're going to accept it, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, we have a very special part of this program, certificates, Citizens Academy graduation. Would you, all come up front, council come down. Ryan, are you ready for us?
Ready.
Come on up.
We'll call you up here in just a quick second, my name. This is the 21st class of the Citizens Academy, and it's been going for 11 years now, going strong. We already have a waiting list for the next class. This is a effort to better connect with residents, gives them opportunity to learn more about the town, and gives us opportunity to learn the citizenry better and what their needs and wants are. So we would like to present them with their certificates this evening. About half of the class is not here because of other commitments and conflicts, but we will, would like to recognize the ones that are here. Is this on? It is on. First is Judy Asbury. Judy, come on up. Congratulations. You're welcome to applaud if you like. She's not here. Ken Graskin. Ben and Hope Hooper, superstars. Tishua Kucharason, is she here? Paul Marthol. David, David Sears or Sarah's? How do you say it? Sears? Kimberly Sharp. I don't think I saw Kimberly. Anybody I missed that's here tonight? If I did, I've got your certificate.
Okay, with that, we're going to take, with that, we're going to take a brief recess. So let's, let's relax for a few seconds. The, I don't think they have any punch or anything, but we'll enjoy. Council, be, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. For discussion and possible action, approving the October 27th and November 3rd, 2016 council meeting minutes. B is approving the location and person transfer of a Series 9 liquor license from the Prescott Hagan Store to Maverick Incorporated, a store located at 3576 Peace Cloudford Hill Road, Lauren Merritt agent. C is approving amendment number two to the grant agreement between the Town of Prescott Valley on behalf of the Upper Verde River Protection Coalition and the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management. D is our department reports. E is our TPT, that's proper, our sales tax reports. F is our monthly financial reports, our council investment report, accounts payable, and approving the board and commission selection committees, 1031, 16 minutes, and approving resolution number 1982 authorizing purchasing supplies and services from council members.
Mayor, I need to recuse myself because of item J.
Okay. Other than that, anyone want to pull an item? You can stay with us here, Rick, and just not move.
I have to leave, Rick.
No, I'm good. Anybody want to pull anything and do approve, approve it as a whole? Marty?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, to approve the consent agenda.
Second, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second the motion.
We have the motion and a second. Will you set the vote, Diane?
Mayor Scoog, had you wished to vote?
Yes. For some reason, it's not showing.
Councilmember Nye?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman, Mallory, and Whiting all voted yes, and Councilmember Anderson has recused himself.
Okay.
That passes, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on then to, Melon, number 12, old business for action, second reading of ordinance number 822, approving zoning map change, ZMC 16-006, Navajo Common Apartments. I've been told that the developer has asked that we table that one for tonight. Motion on that, or can we just go ahead and?
Go ahead.
Okay, we're going to table that one. Move on to number 13A, consideration of appointing Buzz Gummer under Parks and Recreation Commission. Rick, any comments?
Yes, sir, I do. One position on the Parks and Recreation Commission became open when Michelle Tissoe resigned effective September 12, 2016. Michelle was appointed to the Parks and Recreation Commission on January 14, 2010, to fill a partial term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2017. No, that's not correct. She served three consecutive terms, with the last having a term renewal date of June 30th, 2017. The vacancy was advertised and an application was received. Myself, Councilmember Laura Lee Nye, and Mary Mallory conducted the interview, and we are recommending the appointment of Buzz Gummer to fill the vacancy made by Michelle's departure with a term renewal date of June 30th, 2017.
Good. Any comments, Laura?
Oh, sir, excuse me, sir, why do you look so familiar? Would you want to explain why you look so familiar?
It was probably from the police department pictures that they had.
Was it the post office?
It was one of the two. They've, they've all, they all got it. I was, used to be a commissioner in the, in the past, and I kind of retired from that position to help raise the grandson, and now I've gotten laid off of my grandson-raising duties. It must have been the words I was teaching him, I guess. But, so, and I have a void in my life, and I have missed the Parks and Rec Commission, and we're in volunteering for the town, so I'm back. And, and to show my appreciation, it's been a while since you guys have heard one of my poems, so I wrote you another poem.
Oh, gosh.
Okay.
And if you would like me to read it, I will gladly do that.
Everybody plug your ears.
So first of all, in my appreciation, I want to say thank you to Councilman Marty. One day, dude, you and I need to party. Thank you to Councilwoman Laura Lee Nye, who said, "We're choosing Buzz again? Why?" And thank you to Vice Mayor Rick, who said, "Buzz on the Parks and Recs Commission again? I think I'm going to be sick." Thank you to Mr. Mayor Harvey Scoog, who said, "Buzz Gummer? That boy's got a few screws loose in his head." Thank you to Councilmember, Councilwoman Mary, who said, "Buzz back on the Parks and Recs Commission? That's going to be scary." Thank you to Councilman Mike, who said, "Buzz Gummer? I thought he took a hike." And thank you to Larry, where it's so nice to know that when I ask you for money for the Parks and Recs, you have that special place, you tell me where to go. And thank you to Brian Witty. He and his staff are rock stars like P. Diddy. Well, it's time for me to step on the gas and get back to work and kick some Parks and Rec butt. I couldn't think of a word that rhymed with gas.
Oh.
But I do, I, I appreciate so much being able to, given the opportunity again to come back to the Parks and Recs Commission and continue the work that I was involved with, and looking forward to the future with our Parks and Recs again.
Now we have to see if the council effed it out, if they'll vote you in. Mary, any comments?
Grass. Grass will rhyme with gas.
Grass, that's, you know, that's the one. I couldn't figure out.
Yeah. No, I just, you're just amazing, and you've done a great job, and just looking forward to the future.
Me too.
Now, one more thing is required, and that's to get a motion. If it dies for lack of a motion.
I forgot that part, yeah.
All right, now I'm going to try, in case this equipment doesn't work, somebody rescue me.
No. Second that. Did you do it? You made a motion, right? Okay.
Can I verbalize your motion?
I, I didn't, because it didn't come up. That's what I was talking about. I didn't think it would.
Mine worked.
Motion two. Okay, we'll go for it. Motion to appoint Buzz Gummer to the Parks Recreation Commission to an existing term with a renewal date of June 30th, 2017. And we love teasing you.
If, if we don't get a second, it's going to die anyway.
I, I did a second.
I'll second.
Mary seconded it. Will you set the vote, Diane? I'll see how many.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
I put yes on my machine.
Dan, are you sure that was unanimous?
It was unanimous. It was unanimous, I'm sorry. It's unanimous, by the way.
Thank you so much.
The, the poem didn't, didn't cause any problems.
Yeah, and I want to thank the police department for ignoring all the stuff you found on the background check.
Well, thank you, Buzz.
Thank you so much.
And we appreciate having you back on.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If we could, could we go back to item number 12 and take a formal motion to table that item? We have it from legal counsel, that that is the appropriate way to.
Okay, let's go back to 12 and take a formal motion. Anyone want to take a motion to?
Okay, I'd be glad to make a motion to table item A under 12, old business, second reading of ordinance number 822.
Second, anyone?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Oh, we have the motion and a second. Will you set the vote for that, Diane? Or call the vote, whatever you prefer.
That passes unanimously, Mayor.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, we move on then to number C, B, I'm sorry. Consideration of approving the award of a construction contract to Earth Resources Corporation in amount up to $213,550,08, and approving the amendment to the professional service agreement with Lion Engineering, and approving the amendment to the Town Engineer Agreement with Dave and Associates for the viewpoint drive stormwater channelization improvement espoused to manly, Phase 2, CIP number S168-5, or Point 5B. Norm, any comments?
Yeah, thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council. Mayor, you gave it a good introduction, just like to hit a couple of highlights. We discussed this at quite, at length, some of the details at last week's work study. So just some of the highlights, always like to show the project sign that put up. This is Phase 2 of a multi-phase project of the viewpoint channelization. We've talked in the past, some challenges with stormwater management there, so this will be a Phase 2 and get us closer to be able to manage that stormwater in that particular basin. So important to note that Yavapai County Flood Control Tax Dollars is what's funding this project by a grant, so Phase 2, and we'll move forward upon award tonight. And the second slide I just wanted to show too is also that this is the public notice that we'll mail to, when appropriate, to all of the area residents to give them a little background about the project. We did this in similar fashion to phase one, so residents do appreciate this, more information about the project. Lastly, local contractors, local engineers do a very good job. We're really looking forward to getting started with this project around December first. Take about thirty to forty-five days, and good time of year to do, um, channel excavation. And, um, that's all I have tonight, in case you would like some more background.
Questions, anyone? We studied this a lot last week, so it's, any questions, comments, motions, commotions, demotions? Promotion?
We just need to move forward.
We'll move forward, okay. Motion, Laura?
Uh, my machine won't allow me, but I can do it verbally. Motion to approve the award of a construction contract to the loss-responsive bidder, Earth Resources Corporation, in an amount of up to two hundred thirteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and I love the eight cents, and approve the amendment to the professional service agreement with Lion Engineering, and approve the amendment to the Town Engineering Agreement with David and Associates by electronic or voice vote, whatever is going to work for us.
Okay, a second, anyone?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have the motion and a second. Would you sit the vote, Diane? Norm, start flood control.
Very good, we'll get started, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, we move on to the next one. C is consideration of signing a funding agreement with the Arizona Department of Housing, accepting six hundred and forty-five thousand three oh seven in community development block grant funding from fiscal, from the fiscal year twenty sixteen, regional account, to expand the Boys and Girls Club. Ryan?
Mayor, Council, it's great to be with you once again. Earlier this year, we began the process to apply for another round of CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant Funds, and, uh, we sent our, after holding a couple of public hearings, we sent our application into the Arizona Department of Housing, proposing to expand the Boys and Girls, Girls Club building at eighty-two oh one East Loose Drive, I think that's the address, on the corner of Robert and Loose. Uh, that is a town-owned building. Earlier this year, we signed a long-term lease with the Boys and Girls Club in anticipation of applying for this grant. We were notified this summer that we were awarded this grant pending an environmental review of the site. We completed that approximately, uh, two months ago, and sent that paperwork in, and it's now official. So we are coming before you now to ask that you approve this grant. There are no matching funds required, though I believe there's a charge to the Boys and Girls Club and Gerald Solstak, who's here with us tonight, to raise some additional funds if possible, to, to make it a nicer building than what we can do with, with that existing money. So I'm sure Gerald would like to come up here and, uh, present himself. Do you have any questions, form or me? I'm happy to answer them.
Questions? We've already discussed it, but we may have questions. Gerald, good to see you all.
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, um, thank you for even for coming this far even before the vote, uh, for the Boys and Girls Club. We, especially when I started working here about two and a half years ago, almost three years ago, um, you know, PV, you know, we've been in the community for, since two thousand, and it was real important, um, for the organization to kind of reestablish our relationships with everyone, uh, Brian Woody to Ryan Judy with Larry, and, and keeping you guys kind of informed and up to date of what we're doing, and also being a good steward of the building that you guys graciously allow us to, you know, rent from you for a dollar a year. Um, and I keep, think, you know, the, the staff, the board, we're very proud that we're in this position. It's, it's, you know, a lot sooner than we thought that was going to happen, um, but when Ryan approached us, you know, I really thought, you know, wow, you know, we've come a long way already, that they have, uh, the confidence in the Boys and Girls Club to do the right thing for the kids in the community. With that said, uh, we're working already hard with the board, um, to, to be part of it too, not just to say, hey, we have the, the money in, you know, to build on, but also to do some renovations in the existing building, and also take care of our part in this, um, in this contract, and that is to also raise money, um, to, to build the inside of, of what the expansion is going to be, um, but also take into account that, uh, there are other services that are coming out of the, the building, uh, with Brian Woody's department, and some aerobics, and some other classes, and I think that we can do some great things with this expansion. So again, uh, from the Boys and Girls Club Organization, thank you, um, so much, and this is going to allow us to help on average, uh, to serve eighty more kids a day. Uh, we've been on a waiting list since the third day of school, and I've been with the Boys and Girls Club Organizations for ten years, and I've never seen a club, um, or a community where the kids come literally almost every single day, and we're not allowed to ta, we're not able to take kids off that waiting list. You know, I mean, when, when you look at clubs, and we go by our average daily attendance in a lot of our clubs, and throughout the nation, and you see an ebb and flow of maybe a Wednesday is the high day with a hundred and thirty kids, and Friday could be low at, you know, ninety. Every time I get a report every week, I see that PV is constantly at that one-twenty mark Monday through Friday. Um, so it shows that our services are needed. So again, um, thank you so much, and if you have any questions, please.
Thank you. Question, Laura?
I do. You obviously must have an active waiting list. Uh, what is the number of that?
Um, you know, I couldn't really give you that number right now, because we actually stopped taking kids off the.
That many?
Because what we don't want is, is to, you know, even for parents to think that they might have a shot, you know, until we can find some ways around in helping more kids. That actually came up into a board meeting last night that we had, and what was, question was, is how do we get that waiting list off? And it's not, you know, so we're looking at other ways as well right now, uh, to serve more kids, um, even without the expansion.
Well, it's, you, what you're doing is vital, and I hope this sincerely helps you feel supported by not just us here, but the entire community.
Yeah, and it is, and it is, it's, we're, we're very proud, you know, especially if to have the, the town backing on this, so trust me, it's going very far. So thank you so much.
Other questions, comments? Mike?
Yeah, I, I'm just kind of curious, as far as timeline, what we expect in terms of actually implementing, and the other would be, if you can come before us at certain times, as far as highlights or milestones, to give us an update, I think that would be great.
And the next step in the process, once we get the contract documents back, is to competitively select a architect. Um, we're hoping to, if we can, basically double the size of the building.
Right.
If, if the money's there. And, uh, so you'll see me back here within about two months to make that award to an architect, and then we'll give them three or four months to do a design, then bid that out, so hopefully sometime this next summer, we will be bidding the project.
Good. Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for, and I know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our affiliation with the club, that we outpace, I think, just because of the need, I assume, the, the members that you have in your Prescott, uh, club, unless that's changed, and so it's nice that we can respond and accommodate more kids here that have a need to, to get involved, so.
Good. My, my, Rick, you got a question? Marty, you got a question? Any other questions? Motions, demotions, commotions, promotion, anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Marty?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a funding agreement with the Arizona Department of Housing, accepting six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, six hundred and forty-five thousand three hundred and seven dollars in community development block grant funding from the fiscal year twenty sixteen, regional account by electronic and voice vote.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Diane, we have the motion and a second. Would you set the vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Grossman?
Yes.
That's unanimous for Mayor.
Thank you. Gerald, start building. Okay, we move on then to, uh, number D. Consideration of accepting the National Bank of Arizona's banking services proposal and sign the necessary documents. Katie?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Last week at work study, I had brought before you the banking RFP that we had submitted to the public. On those results, as you all remember from last week, National Bank of Arizona was the lowest responding bidder. You all had some questions related to that, and I'd like to address those first with you. Um, we, uh, reached out to National Bank and received a confirmation from them that they will not be raising prices, their fees, in the entire five-year term of the agreement. And we also have a, um, at any point in time, if we're not satisfied with their services, we just need to provide a written notification to them and give them ninety days, and we can choose to, um, switch banks at that time. We would suggest against that, just because of everything involved in the RFP process and switching banks, but that is an option for us. Um, and with that, do any of you have any other questions for me at this time?
Other questions, anyone?
I, I have no questions. I'm, thank you so much for getting that information, and I do appreciate, uh, National Bank, uh, for its, you know, um, pricing and the customer service that it gives, and the fact that it's local, right down the street. I really, really appreciate that, so thank you very much.
Good. Other questions come? Marty?
No, I don't have a question, I have a comment, you know, just again, to mirror what Mary said, you know, thank you very much for getting us that information, and, uh, so all my, all my doubts are gone, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, but I can't help but think what Rick said. Sometimes a dollar store does have things for a dollar.
Any other questions, comments, motions?
If you'll let me, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I think we're ready.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign a, oops, wrong one. Oops. Sorry. Eh. Motion authorize the mayor to accept National Bank of Arizona's banking services proposal and sign the necessary agreements available at a later date for a five-year agreement ending in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two by electronic and voice vote.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
We have the motion and a second. Would you sit the vote, Diane?
Councilmember Whiting, how do you wish to vote?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Katie, good job, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, we move on to number, uh, E, consideration of, uh, approving a memorandum of understanding between the town and the state of Arizona. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, so the item before you tonight is, uh, it's kind of complicated, but the Department of Defense and their excess equipment is, uh, given to law enforcement agencies across the United States. The agreement under law is with the state of Arizona, and then Arizona is the one who gives it out to the individual law enforcement agencies in the state, so that's why it's a memo of understanding between us and the state of Arizona. But it's actually federal, uh, equipment. These are the types of equipment that, um, generally we can't afford to have, like night vision and things like that. Probably the most, uh, useful thing that we've had in the past couple of years is the, uh, the, uh, rescue vehicle, the armored rescue vehicle that we have. That was used about two years ago in conjunction with an effort that, or an incident that they had up in Ash Fork, I think everybody remembers that. And at the time, the people that were in this compound, that were firing weapons on law enforcement, they were using fifty-caliber rifles, and the, uh, the little armored peacekeeper vehicles that we have aren't rated to withstand fifty-caliber rounds, but the Prav, the rescue vehicle that we have is, so it led the way up there, and because of the show of force of that vehicle, along with some other things, was able to bring that, uh, incident to a peaceful conclusion. And I think, uh, Diane can attest to the fact, because we saw the, uh, the registration on that vehicle, it's worth about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars, not something I have in my budget. So it's a, it's a great program, it's not one that we abuse, I know it's come under scrutiny by the public, uh, over the past couple of years, but it's not something that we use to intimidate or anything like that, and it's a really good program. The only cost to the city, or the town, is two hundred and fifty dollars, which is a, uh, like a registration fee, or a membership fee. And I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? I think we're all familiar with it. Any questions, Laura?
I don't have any questions, but I, I want to make a response to your comments. I do not understand citizens criticizing law enforcement for putting in place lifesaving equipment. I, I just, I just need to make that statement. It's, it's beyond my understanding. We want our officers to go home to their families at night, and that's exactly what this is about.
And I appreciate that, but I, I will say that sometimes we tend to be our own worst enemies, and it's, it's like a, a child eating gummy bears, and they don't just take one, if they can get the whole bag, they'll take it. And so there's been law enforcement agencies around the country who have used this program, and, and I'll say abused it to a point where they've, they've accumulated so much equipment, they don't even know what they have anymore. Those are, are things that make all of us look bad. Uh, I can assure you that that's not the case here at Prescott Valley.
Good, thank you, Chief. Any other comments? Mike?
Are you happy to make a motion?
Okay, I think we're ready.
Motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between town and the state of Arizona for participation in the Department of Defense procurement program.
And I'll second that, Mayor.
Okay, we have the motion and a second. Diane, would you set the vote?
Everybody has voted yes, except, um, Councilmember Whiting. How do you wish to vote?
I wish to vote yes. I've retired my laptop, by the way.
I see that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, go for it.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you for your continued support.
That's a good, a good job there, we appreciate that. Okay, we've gone to F. Consideration of approving the amendment for the out of scope services with CH two M Hill, OMI, in the amount of ninety-one thousand eight hundred ninety-five nineteen. Neil?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have before you is an out of scope services agreement with CH two M Hill, who is the company that operates our water and our wastewater system, and, you know, we've had an ongoing contract with them for twenty-some-odd years. As I mentioned last week, uh, we do out of scope agreements with them from time to time to, uh, cover things that don't fall in their normal realm of operation, but are things that are, um, needed within our system and are, um, things that they need to be involved in. Um, and so this agreement, um, which is for ninety-one thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents, approximately half of it is for controls, um, for our water system, and the other half is for controls and things for our wastewater system. As you'll recall, we did discuss this last week, so, um, I guess I would just open it up for questions.
Questions, anyone? Yeah, we did study this very extensively, and it looks like a good deal. Any comments? Commotions, motions?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I can't do it on my electronics, so I'll do it verbally. Motion to approve the amendment for the out of scope services with CH two M Hill, OMI, in the amount of ninety-one thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and nineteen cents.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
Mayor Scoog?
Yes.
Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Go for it.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we go on to G. Consideration of awarding the library cafe, coffee bar, concentrate, concessionaire, rather, contractor Linda Austin, doing business at Open Book Cafe and Coffee House. Ryan?
Mayor, Council, good to be with you once again this evening, for the third or fourth time now. Uh, in August this year, we came before you with a proposed, uh, contract for a concession app for the library, uh, that during the summertime, we had advertised for a new operator there. Uh, we met with some, uh, success, but we only had one response to that initial round of advertising. Uh, the last time we met, you directed us to, uh, go back out, work with the Chamber of Commerce and others to promote the opportunity once again, and we were more successful, we had three, uh, proposals that we received. Uh, Committee of Town Staff met, and we are recommending that we award a contract to Linda, as she has, uh, Denise with her as well, from the Blackboard Cafe. We are proposing a one-year contract, but two one-year extensions. Uh, as a condition of the contract, they would return ten percent of their gross sales back to the town for utilization of that space. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions, anyone?
I'm sure Linda Denise, Denise would like to come up as well.
Bring him up, because I love the menu. Bring him up because I love the menu.
Come on up. Any other comments?
No.
This is impressive.
Yes.
There we are, you're gonna...
Hi.
Good to meet you and appreciate that.
Thanks, and I've seen you before in the cafe.
Been there.
And I'm Denise, actually, my mom is Linda and she's shy, so she sent me up, and I'm sorry, I don't, I'm sorry I don't have a poem for you all, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm just excited we're not going to have vending machines.
Yay.
And I did look over, you know, all of the information and, and you're going to not only have lunch, but you're going to have breakfast, and that's what's been missing.
Yeah.
You seem to have paid attention and really understand what, what we really wanted and what we needed. You've got cold sandwiches, hot sandwiches, salads to go.
Full coffee and espresso, smoothies.
Absolutely. And I just, I can't imagine we're not going to prove it, and I just want to wish you success.
Thank you.
Good, thank you, Laura. Any other comments, Mary?
No, I'd just like to, I was going to make a motion, but did you have a...
Mike, go ahead, comment.
No, I just wanted to express my excitement as well. We're really happy to see you and hopefully we can support you and you'll be here for several years.
Thanks, we hope so.
Mary?
I'll make a motion to award the library cafe, coffee bar, concessionaire contract to Linda Austin DBA Open Book Cafe and Coffee House.
I'll second that.
I think we're all happy about that. You want to set the motion, Diane? Set the vote, I should say. For some reason, mine is moving up.
Mayor, we should thank them for their patience to sit here all this time.
Mayor, how do you wish to vote?
Yes.
Diane, Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
That's unanimous, Mayor.
Thank you. Linda, congratulations and thank you so much. Okay, we go on to our unscheduled comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council need not request permission in advance. Such remarks shall be remarried, addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member thereof. Such remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. Anyone care to make any public comments? Kirk, no comments? One, come on up. Any, any other? If there's no other comments, then we'll move on to number 13, which I know everyone hates, and that's an adjournment. Anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. Would you set the vote, Diane?
I can't. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, and Councilmember Whiting?
Yes.
Thank you, that's unanimous, Mayor.
Unanimous. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.